I'm not a player, now I'm a private color player. You were talking about pride there, weren't you?
Come on, come on around.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this another day of life and we thank you for the blessings you've given us. We ask that you would now be with us during this meeting and may we make decisions that are pleasing, acceptable on your side and also for the best interest of our citizens. For it in Christ's name I pray.
Amen.
United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to July the 2nd. Went to a city council meeting. First item in the agenda is a preliminary meeting from June 18th, June 19th, council meeting. Has everybody taken off to look over minutes? If so, got any comments or questions, if not, I mean, if they have any comments, questions I need to ask for motion for approval.
Motion.
Chris made a motion after the second. Can say all in favor.
You're in favor.
The next item on agenda is a lady here, Marge Bookout, about the WCHS Office of Education Coordinator. She's got, I'm speaking on behalf of that. If you'll come up.
If I have to come up here, I was happy back there.
Move that around.
No, this is fine, this is fine. I'm Marge Bookout, I'm the co-op coordinator at Wentzville City High School. Thank you so much for letting me speak for just a minute and I won't take much of your time, but I was just talking to this lady back here and I was telling her that if you've never been anywhere besides Wentzville, you don't know what a treasure you have right here and I really appreciate all you've done for me and all your support you've given this year. But why I came here for is to tell you that we need your help. We had, last year we had 31 students in the co-op program and we had an early release program where the students, if they had their credits, the seniors could leave early and the state said we can't do that anymore. So I'm expecting more, I'm gonna say 45 or so students this year instead of 31. So I'm gonna need places for these students to work, so I'm calling on you to help me out. Thank you, Mr. Perry, I know you have one of mine. If you want some more, let me know. Um, Mr. Perry, I know you have one. Thank you so much. But I just wanna tell you a little bit about what we've done. We had one ninth grader who, um, one ninth grader who did an internship at the middle school. He told me he liked gardening, so Mr. Perry said, well, why don't we let him go work with his cur in the greenhouse? So he worked with her with that. So he was the only ninth grader we have. We usually have just 11th to 12th graders. We had 10 11th graders and 20 12th graders. And out of these 31, we had 26 complete the program. Two transferred to other schools, one changed their schedule and we lost two. These two students had more problems than any adult I've ever known and if I called their name, you would probably know them. But that's what I want to target, we don't wanna lose any of those students. So maybe if we had them in a place, like if they were boys and they liked to do auto or whatever, instead of McDonald's or wherever they were, if we can get them where they need to be, maybe that's what will keep them in school. So if you will please consider hiring one of our students. I'm gonna give you everybody a survey, it's got my card on here. If you have a place for them, please let me know. Even if you don't, if you fill out these, I can have these on my records for, to know, not to bother you if you don't want to. Also, I wanna tell you, this is what I'm very proud of, um, we had, the students worked 20,766 hours. There was 1,579 hours that were internships, so they were not paid for 1,500 hours. So our total wages earned were $158,642.58. $158,000 is a lot of money, so you know that goes back into the city. So when you're helping these students, you're also helping the city because you know they're gonna spend every dime of what they make. That's a lot of money. So if you will consider hiring our students, I sure would appreciate it. And if you have any questions, here's my personal, uh, cell. If you'll just text me or call me, I sure would appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions for me? Todd, have you tried cold turkey pizza?
No.
Oh my gosh, it's dead.
I'd like to make a comment on what, what you're, um, what you're doing, not only, you know, creating, you know, talking about the payroll and different things, amount of money in the city, but if you're actually working, it actually helps to keep the crime rate down because I've worked several of those students that come through that program, you know, but driving a bus too, I see firsthand a lot of, you know, a lot of different kinds of students and I work them out of this program, a lot of them, a lot of them, bad to say, some of them may not actually do it too, to keep them being, to have something else to do other than go home or whatever. I mean, it's, because of home, it might not be as well as everybody thinks it is. And you know, you see a lot and learn a lot in just 45 minutes on the bus, you know, somebody that sits close to the front, they talk to the driver or whatever, and you're sitting between schools, waiting loads, you learn a lot. You know, that's, that's one thing that when you've got teachers that can pick up and not, and realize that we don't, you don't know what that student's been through at home, you don't know what kind of life they're living or what they're living in with their drugs or, you know, abuse or whatever and, and being able, if they go through a program and be around a different atmosphere that will help deter problem crimes and them getting involved with wrong people. I mean, I think it's, it's not only important, but you give them a chance to try to do what they like to do, you know. I work, I work usually two or three a year on that program. I think that's definitely the way that we try to help students. I mean, there's so many things, it's just, just, just like, you know, I hate to say use that as a term, but it's kinda like running cows to a sailboat and you run them through and you just run them in and run them out and you don't want the school to be that way. You don't have them run a student in and run them out just for test scores. You want to learn that student, you know, you wanna learn more about that person because this community, it's a rural community of less than 5,000 population and we want, we want our community to stay above and beyond other communities of living. And by taking and trying to work with these students all the way around, not just education wise, get good test scores, but try to see how that we can find what that student is capable of doing and it would help our workforce and help keep crime down at the same time.
Or know if that's what they wanna do, and they may go to work with them and that's what they wanna do and they get there and they decide real quick, they don't wanna get there. It gives an opportunity to try something new and move on to something else. And like I said, those two guys, I think if they didn't in the right spot, they may have stayed in school and gotten a diploma and now they're gone. And I hate, hate to lose them. And, and I appreciate that, but I, um, when I, when I heard that Pizza Bar was coming to town, I went to the man in Carver Hill, I spoke to him and I said, I'd like to, for you to think about hiring some of my students, which he has three, someone that's on it. He said, yes, he said, I appreciate you coming by. He said, I've already talked to somebody and they said, if you wanna hire a good worker, hire the students because they work better than moms, so.
What kind of hour do they work?
Well, it depends on what grade they're in. If they're in the 11th grade, they can leave at 12, no, at 1. And if they're in, alright, if they're in the 12th grade, they can leave at 1 and confuse the seventh period. If they are in, if they're, I'm saying that right, yeah, 12th. 11th graders leave at 2, so they can confuse 7th period.
How late do they work? Can they work in the evening?
After they get off from 2 though, whenever, yes.
Whenever?
Not whenever, but how long do you need them?
It's a, it's a, they can't, it's COVID related, but there's only so many hours.
Right, in their age.
I can't remember exactly what time it is.
Did y'all see that, young child 15 years old fell off a roof in COVID, working already?
Yeah.
So you have to watch all the safety standards and make sure you don't sit in there every 15 years old. Any other questions for me? Anybody? Another thing I wanted to say, when I have gone to check on these students, I'll, I'll just say, I was co-op coordinator at Tarrant, Alabama, and I did not get the comments in Tarrant that I got here in Wentzville. When I would go and check on a student, oh, they're wonderful, they're fabulous. I had one teenage boy, if you saw him walking through the door all dirty and everything, you would say, I don't know if I wanna hire him. But when I went to his boss, I said, how's he doing? They said, he's perfect, send me another one just like him. So you never know, you never know what you're gonna get. So if you'll give them a chance, I appreciate it. And if you'll leave these papers here and Brett Burson giving to me, he's my secretary coming in, I'm just kidding, if you'll leave me in the office, I'll pick them up one day. Thank you so much. Thank you, Nikki. Thanks.
All right, the next item on agenda is old business. The councilwoman did any old business. We'll discuss.
He had a chance to stay in the hospital?
I did, I got, talked to Dr. Inger, he's gonna, he, this is, I think, his first full week of being in place of taking over the position of the CEO. He said he'd be glad to meet with us. We, I'm trying, we'll try to schedule to come to the hospital, meet at the hospital. I feel like, I think we said the 2nd. He moved away to the holidays, he said that he'd tell me the 2nd week of July is his time again, so I'm gonna get it, it'd be better in the morning. I'll try to get it set up around 8:00 or 9:00.
Also, Mayor, I'm sure you already know this, but the landowner and O'Reilly's have come to that agreement and that is closed and they're informing, informing the landowner that they should start constructing here in the near future, so that'd be good for the community as well, so. I think they hired, okay, probably what, 15 or 20 people?
I would talk to them.
Yeah, so that'd be good. So they're excited about coming here, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I've talked with them twice, I mean, they've had their plans sent in here for a while.
So that's good.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be good on that side over there. If we can just get something on the other side too.
That's right.
Working on that too, working on that yesterday. Got anything, you got anything? Oh, if y'all, I've been, I've spoken, I've been talking to David Thornhill and the C3 in the different county, the different mayors and, and going about, you know, remember Greg Lowery and Fett Chamber? The guy that told Fett Chamber, come in and they spoke on the hemp field. That's steady moving forward with, they include, they're going to include all 67 counties with this with the governor, at the governor's office. They've been being advised on how, how they can do it to try to get the support that they need from the governor's office. I need to, I'm, I'm through the request before now to talk with him, with the C3 and him working with them. If the city needs to help financially for trying to get that moving more, moving forward, they've got the stuff in place for what to ask for, you know, for, for the travel expense and fuel expense on that, if the council could see it, you know, make a honorary donation to help support that.
I mean, Mayor, for me, I'm, I'm gonna be a no because, I mean, he stated at night that he already had some financial package and I think the money that he was requesting was for a trip to Montgomery, so, I mean, I think, I think he's set up with monies already that he can make that trip. I mean, you know, once he gets off, he, farmers involved and we see where it goes, I mean, I mean, we make a type of look at, or I could take a look at again him, but, you know, for me, at this time, I don't know.
If anybody else? Watch your thoughts on that one, Steve.
I, I so like crazy, if we, you know, if we need help in the future or something, we might can, but I'd like to know a little more about it myself. What grade, something like that.
Right now, right now, I'm in the 11th.
Let's see if he's, oh, I'm trying to think if there's any other old business. They, we, Brett has, you remember when we, we okayed him to hire another officer to replace him, what he has? If he's, he posted it and didn't have any good applicants or didn't have, did you have any applicants? Didn't have any applicants, so I'm going, I'm, okay, if it's okay with the council, which I'm sure it is, because they're okay, are you okay for him to post that again to try to, he thought that we might get some, some people, you know, that would be worth looking at the resume and looking at the background, but he hadn't had that, so I'm gonna let him, he wants to post that position again. If nobody's got no problem with that, we're still down on the officer.
Are we trying to find one that's always got his stuff or you want to send somebody?
What was the question?
In a perfect world, I'd like to have somebody that's already Apost, but I think our best bet is probably to send somebody.
That's what I think, because if you ain't got nobody, if you get nobody to put it in, I mean, that's a job. And I mean, if, with another one that's already got their Apost or whatever, let's find somebody that wants a job.
Yeah, I think it's probably, I think it's probably will be the best, but then we've got to, to your contract.
Are you gonna post it that way? You want to post it that way? So your prior posting was Apost certified?
Okay.
You didn't get any applications either way?
No, the prior was just Apost. I'm sorry, I didn't understand. I mean, your question, yes, it was just Apost.
Yeah, so you didn't get nobody, so.
But either option's still open though, right?
I'm sorry.
I said either option's still open, they post or not, still.
Absolutely.
I mean, I know you do the interview and everything, which I've said in on those interviews, William, how much of a background check did we, I mean, how far, how, how, how much of a, how much of a background check is required and how much of a background check do you do on a person?
From the time they're born, complete criminal history.
Pretty terrible.
Just, just anybody, anybody's not qualified to go Apost, get that Apost certification. You got, they gotta meet certain criteria before they can do that.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, how, how, how much criteria is that? Because I, as hard as it is getting to get law enforcement, I was wondering if they're gonna lighten up, try to get toward any more.
Uh, they, the Apos have made no recommendation to lighten the load as far as, of course, you can't have the felony, but also if you've had any kind of prescribing or anything of that nature, they, they kind of try on that.
Don't you gotta run a mile in two minutes or something?
You have the physical requirements of a mile and a half.
And that's me.
You have to run a mile and a half, 50, 28. You gotta do pushups, setups, some of the.
Push that LTD, you gotta push the LTD, run, jump six foot wall and then run a log, got crawl through 36 inch, was it 24 inch, 24, 36 inch one and you gotta drive up dead body a hundred and.
But we put them, we put them through that test before they can go to the academy. If they can't pass it here, then we don't send. And then you have to have, you have to have the applicant's paperwork turned in four weeks prior to the academy.
That's what puts you in behind when somebody's worked out too, when you notice when you fire somebody, you just do that four weeks before you even get them.
And now they've added what's referred to as the MAT test, basic ability test. And locally, the Adult Education Program offers that test, which you have to go do. You have to meet three specifications as far as your reading, writing, math. And you have to take that test and make so high on it before you can even go to the academy. It's gotta be approved, that test's gotta be approved before you can send in their paperwork. If they don't pass that, then they don't give.
Mike, I think we might need to re, re-mention the fact, the fact of what's, you sent an email out. Did you send that, it was a, it was addressed plural, but I think I was on one, I don't know if you didn't copy anybody with me on that email. Did all the councils get that email about the garbage?
All, all that had text.
I did.
Y'all know, y'all familiar with one time I watched fiscal going to effect with the garbage for the lake feeds. If nobody else has got any other old business, I don't know, um, any other business that I've got. I need to, I guess, going to the council's paper, I need to ask for a motion to pay the council's paper. If there's any question on that.
Motion.
All the papers. Oh, I need to make, if I can, I need to make this, the council just put me in the bottom. What is that? I got one. We've agreed every time out of mine, I think.
Keep that in perfect, like, you don't know what's going on.
I guess this is Bob Page from Hamilton sent this out to the, I don't know if she gave y'all, y'all a copy of that, to let her serve an invitation to me to learn about the Uniform 42 Alliance Group. I think y'all might remember, I think I mentioned this to y'all, I'm talking about, to, the way time flies, I'd better say two to four months ago, it might be in the two lane or maybe closer to four, right? I'll, I'll, I'll say probably around three months ago, I mentioned this to you. Important, important, it's an informative meeting with answers for any questions and an opportunity to become a part of 422 Alliance Group. The theme of the organization is to strengthen numbers and voices of many good causes for many good causes, both interesting concepts. Please plan to attend this meeting scheduled to be held at Hamilton City Hall at 1:30 PM on July the 25th, 2019. It's got a course on there, you know, if you plan to attend, if you would, call or email them, Bob Page at Hamilton. This is a, this, this, I would say it's kinda like what we've got with C3 with three counties, Beverlymore and Marion. This is gonna be, this alliance here is to do five counties, I think, which would include Beverlymore, Marion, Walker and Winston, I think it's the, I think that's the five counties that it's, it's to. A lot of times, it's just like, you know, when you go to the federal government or the state government, it always has a war to bear and if you do it in large numbers, if you go in large numbers to try to get money from your area or your region or your district or whatever, it's, it's just like somebody signing a petition to try to get something done in a city or a county or whatever, the bigger the numbers is, you know, the more impact it has and that's what this kinda is designed to do, is to help a bigger voice in Washington or, you know, for big megagrabs or whatever. Mentioned that to you, but that's what Bob put that on there for. I think this, uh, 4th of July, the country's like senior living, they're inviting, um, tomorrow, July 3rd, 12 noon, for some fellowship, some snacks or whatever over there, 12 noon tomorrow. I usually try to attend that every year, if you get a chance to go over and kind of, I think they're, you talked about, I can't, it's been a day or two since I've been over, I believe they're about a full past, you know, I think, I think they've got 20 something residents at the home of the place.
Yes, we're close.
I think they've got 20 something residents over there. It's good if you get a chance to go over and visit with the people that really, they really get, he got people coming over to visit them, so if you get a chance for anybody there tomorrow, if you're around tomorrow, tomorrow, go by and visit with them a little bit over there on that. I don't know, another thing that I was gonna, right before the council, get the councils right there on the, what was that proclamation? K-Ivy, I don't know if y'all familiar with it or not, but K-Ivy's authorized Friday of July 5th, 2019's a holiday for all state employees. State offices will be closed on that date, except for those that's essential to maintain personnel. And, you know, of course, they got any personnel that has work, they're gonna take that time off as soon as they can there. Local, the local, other local cities, UN and Hamilton, I'm not sure about Hable, I think, they might have allowed their employees to have that day off. I was gonna put it before the council to save the council, our employees to have the Friday off as well or to tell them to keep clicking and ticking.
I make most of them take off. So I thought it was a statewide, I don't, I didn't think it was just state employees, I think she said it was a whole.
She, she can only speak for her state, but. You're in favor of doing it?
I'm second in favor of motion.
Uh, you're in favor of doing, favor of letting them have that Friday off? Well, I've got, I guess that yours is in form of motion, yours is second, I guess I asked, well, I'm in favor of letting them have Friday off.
Yeah. Any opposed? I think.
Any opposed? Hey, Brett have to, I think he'll have to.
Garbage is already advertised, they're running Friday's route and Thursday's route Friday, so however that would need to work.
I mean, I can come in if I need to, it doesn't matter to me. Would be garbage anyway.
But Ralph's prepared to run the route anyway. We have the drop box, so.
So, I mean.
I went along with it.
You're a yes and what are you?
They all do, so if nobody posts, it just, I don't, I don't get it, but I'm a little one.
Where you go, he's working, how are you, how are you gonna do that?
They're the same way as police and fire guys. They work anyway.
Well, I heard, I heard the proclamation from the.
Work same way with the person.
It actually says they can take another day off.
Yeah. We're doing our trip.
So if we had to have to make work, they can take it off later, eight, it's a four thing.
They're still paying for the holiday and they can work, they get their, it's like a two day kind of thing. Cause they're still have to work on holidays.
So, actress I had, didn't have Brett then on the, Brett over got a, from our, our insurance company, I guess, have you seen? I guess, have you seen the letter that I got from the loss control? They couldn't find anything that was bragging on how the police department, the loss control, the methods that Brett's got in place for wherever they were impressed with it, and they didn't have any recommendations for your department. They, they were impressive in ways that he, the control plan that he's got in place to help keep, prevent loss. So they really gave him a top ten rating, I guess you could say, on, on the way his department's handled. So I was glad to get that from, uh, and, and.
One of that was the body armor that you all agreed to, the cameras. A lot of that was noted in that, you're probably getting that same letter in the mail.
If nobody else has got anything, I need to ask, we will, that's all the action we're gonna take tonight and before adjourned. I need to ask the council if they'll let me go into executive session just for a few minutes to discuss a possible, possible business adventure to the city of Windfield. Can you ask for motion? All right, that's all I got, I appreciate it. Y'all have a good tour, if you're out of trouble, new records, call us, and I'll, I'll.